We're going to start the meeting. If you could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, with which we stand, one nation, under our right and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have a bigger crowd than last month. We have one case, which is a continuation from last month that we're going to hear. I guess we need to start with the roll call first, so, sorry.
Can't you hear your microphones on?
It is.
Can you hear this? No?
Can you hear any of us?
Can you hear us? Okay.
I don't believe we have a speaker system in here. I believe that these microphones are for the recording. So, we will try to speak up as loudly as we can.
Okay. Jana, may we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Buco?
Here.
Mr. Eder?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Reichman?
Here.
May I get a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second?
Mr. Eder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Ms. Buco?
Yes. And the meeting last month, November 17th, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes, please?
I'll move to approve the minutes for last month.
And I'll second.
I have changes. I have one change. Page five. The, basically, the last paragraph before it says Chris Jolly, where it says zoning resolution, I believe it should state only 78 of the 120 spaces would be permitted. Will you verify that, Mr. Snyder?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, I had one other question. On page six, at last month's meeting, Steve Snyder from the Villas was here. It says his address is One Mariners Cove?
I own a unit there, but I do not...
Okay. Because I was thinking Mariners Cove was not in that location. So, that's correct?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing else. So, a motion to approve the minutes as modified by George.
Okay. Mr. Flynn?
Abstain.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Ms. Buco?
Yes. Jana, I did sign these. Should I mark that?
Let's see if the correction's on one page. Yeah, you do it, I can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Eder?
Abstain.
Okay. As I mentioned, we've got one case this evening. This is continuation from last month. It's Sims number 6-87. Is it Zavakos Shopping Center?
Zavakos.
Zavakos Shopping Center, Enterprise Car Sales. Are we going to hear from staff again, please?
Brian Snyder, zoning administrator for Hamilton County. This is a continuation of the previous month's case. I presented the report at last month's meeting during the public hearing, the first public hearing for this case. I'm not going to go into the whole staff report again. The case was continued at last month's meeting to allow for preparation of a landscape plan and a lighting plan. And there was some discussion about some other details, which I believe Mr. Reichman was taking notes on. We did receive revised plans. There is a landscape plan that complies with the zoning code. In fact, it has additional, a number of additional trees and shrubs along the streetscape for Governor's Way. There is a graphic. This is not a graphic that I can administer. It's just for visualizing the streetscape buffer. The site plan that shows the exact number of trees and shrubs and their location is what we would go by. There was a revision. Since the last time you saw it, all it did was change the sizes of the trees and shrubs at planting to comply with the zoning code. The numbers and locations are the same as the plan that you're looking at, so that's the way that it would be planted, with the bushes along the street, mixed in with some canopy trees. It would, like I said, exceed the requirements of the zoning code for streetscape buffers. We did receive a lighting plan as well. There are some light levels on the western property line, which is an internal property line between the two retail uses where the light levels are over .5. The applicant indicated that they will correct that and make those .5. But the lighting plan that was submitted does show light levels less than .5 at the southern property line for the right-of-way of Governor's Way. So, that part of the lighting plan does comply with the requirements of the zoning code. In fact, they've ranged between zero foot candles at that property lines of 0.3 foot candles at that property line, which is well under the half a foot candle that's permitted by the zoning code. So, the lighting plan does comply as well. I believe that's the only thing that the board asked for revisions for, and we have received them, as staff has reviewed them, and they are in compliance, as I stated, with the one issue related to the property line between the two retail uses. Other than that, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody on the committee have questions for Brian?
No. I think that addressed what our concerns were at the last meeting, so, thank you.
Correct. Just as a point of clarification, since there are a number of people who weren't here at the last meeting, this is a retail use that's been a retail use since it was constructed, but before the condominiums were sold across the street. They're not expanding the parking lot any closer to those condominiums. It's a retail use currently. There's no restriction on parking in the parking spaces facing towards the condominiums to the south, and there's no streetscape buffer currently along that frontage. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add at this meeting? If you could state your name and address.
Sure. Chris Jolly, 5925 Wilcox Place, Suite E, Dublin, Ohio.
I'm Jennifer Hendrick, and I'm with Enterprise, and I'm 4600 McCauley Place.
Thank you.
For the lighting, to kind of further clarify what Brian stated, so, those are all existing light pole locations. We'd be replacing the heads on those with new LEDs, just to be more energy efficient, provide a little modern lighting in the space. And then, on these shrubs, primarily, we're looking at planting an evergreen, an arborvitae type of shrub along the right-of-way there, so that it would provide year-round screening. The variety that's selected, this note on here, would get up to 10 feet tall, so I think that would provide a very nice buffer there along the road. And, as previously stated as well, all the vehicles that would be for sale, they would be backed in, so you're not necessarily going to have headlight glare coming through, facing the right-of-way as well. And for those who weren't here as well, there is, the overhead door in the back is for a wash bay. It's not a typical type of, like, service bay you may see with other auto dealerships, and it's primarily just for kind of spot cleaning, any vehicles before they would be sold, and any activities would be occurring while that door is closed.
Any questions from the committee for the applicant?
I realize this might have been covered, but on the parking spaces that face Governor's Way, that you show in blue and red, are those existing currently?
Yes.
There's no change being made to it?
Correct. Yeah, there's no change in any parking spaces. We're just color coding how we're allocating the use of the spaces. Thanks. Thank you.
I have some questions. So, the first question to pick up on that question was your proposed 10 spaces in the rear for car sales. You state that you are going to back those in.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, then, I have a question, then. What is your typical operating hours, and when do you shut down at night?
Ryan's are car sales.
So, can you state your name and address, sir?
Ryan Springer, 4600 McCauley Place, Cincinnati. I'm our group car sales manager. I run all of our dealerships in Ohio. Typical operating hours are 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM summer hours, so 9 to 8. Typically, we like to stay open in the daylight time, for the most part. But, yeah, 9 to 8 would be the hours through the summer, 9 to 7 in the winter.
Okay. So, it doesn't sound like there's going to be a lot of activity with headlights coming and going in that back section?
Yeah.
At night?
Exactly. So, providing the streetscape buffer and all that as well, but mostly, the cars will be static, for the most part, except for when you pull them out or take them to show to customers or whatever. And the, you know, the primary, most of the activity will occur out front of the dealership, on the, I would call it, was it the west side of the building, or whatever faces the retail, towards Fields Erdel, so, just parking in the back along the building, so.
Okay. Thank you. I have other questions. So, I appreciate the landscape plan. So, the question is, is the signage up front on Fields Erdel, do you plan to do any landscaping around that sign?
Not currently proposed, no. We didn't look into adding anything additional there. We can certainly look at it.
Yeah, I think that would be good to see. It's bare now, and I realize that that's, you're complying with what's currently there. I don't know if you have an easement to that area? Is that an easement, or do you own that in fee?
It's part of the property. It's owned by...
Okay. So, you could plant, do some small plantings around there, not to interfere with the sign, but to kind of dress it up a little bit.
Yeah, I think we're very open to that. We just would have to look at snow and salt and some...
Yeah, it's pretty narrow, so we'd have to keep something relatively small.
Right.
Stay on the property.
Mr. Flynn, it's in a 10-foot panhandle. The sign's in the middle of a 10-foot panhandle, so they only have five feet on either side, less than five feet.
Okay. So, you could do some small shrubs and things that...
Yeah, I think it would be very few in that area, but we definitely could do that.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we agreed on, or we talked about, totally replacing that sign with a more modern, more decorative to the area sign as well. It's not going to be that old school.
So, I see your proposed sign. Is it any different than what is currently proposed?
No. The proposed sign you see is what Ryan's speaking of. It's a newer shield sign, instead of refacing the existing older cabinet.
Yeah. So, you could, it looks like, you know, you could do some landscaping in that area, and... Okay. Great. So, going back to your lighting plan, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the zero foot candles at the property line, but you mentioned in here that you're going to continue with the wall packs in the back.
I think...
That's what's shown on the photometric plan. It's accounting for that.
Yeah. I guess, you know, I mean, and I have experience with lighting, with what I do for a living. But I also know that wall packs can still be seen irrespective of the foot candles. Is it possible to take those down and use other types of lighting to shine the other way towards the building, yet still provide the security that you're going to need and want?
I would think it's probably achievable. It's a little tough, because we only have the poles on the street side, and we don't want to do it too bright there, so we're casting too much light back as well, when we're trying to throw it out, you know, forward at the same time. The biggest benefit we're seeing is there's those corner lights up above the roof that are shining straight out, and these wall packs would be lower, much lower than those, to just illuminate more at ground level. I understand what you're saying. You still see the light source, but...
Yeah, I appreciate the landscaping, but I'm just saying, you're going to see the building, so, which means you're going to see the wall pack, right? Or am I wrong in that?
Yeah, it would be visible.
Yeah.
Approximately, how high are the wall packs?
I think they're probably about 10 or 12 feet up.
Just to clarify, the plan that shows existing lights on the building, those are roof-mounted lights. You're talking about taking those down and replacing them with new wall packs, right?
In that same area, but more...
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought the top-mounted lights were more of an interference for the residents across the street. They're very bright, if you would, I know you've been to the site, but when you stand there, that's what I see from the back. So, we thought the wall packs would be a less intrusive type of lighting, but still provide the security that we need in the area back on the lot.
Okay.
Anything else, George?
I will, I might have some more questions, but I'll defer at this point.
Okay.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make one other statement. I did let the applicant know this as well. The directional sign that's being proposed is allowed to be four feet tall and four square feet in size, and the one that's shown is bigger than that. I believe that the applicant has agreed to do the four-foot tall, four-foot, four-square foot sign.
We could do something. I don't know if it's going to look like that. I think I might have mentioned in the last meeting that I would show our standard sign, which is a little bit larger.
Larger, larger than four square feet and four feet in height is a freestanding sign, and there's, there are conditions that relate to the original zone change that relate to freestanding signage. I don't believe there's another freestanding sign that's permitted on this property, so...
Okay. Yeah, I misunderstood at the last meeting. So, we can certainly do a four-square-feet foot sign. You said four feet in height?
Four feet in height and four square feet, right.
So, I will have questions related to the signage, because I'm not totally, I don't fully understand what are we doing here? Are we permitting signage on the back and directional sign on the rear, as well as both sides and the front? I wasn't clear.
I don't believe so. I think that the plans that I've seen that were most recent have a car, Enterprise sign on the front of the building facing north towards Fields Erdel, no signs on the side, no signs on the rear, a new freestanding sign replacing the existing in the same location at the same size, and a directional sign at the entrance off of Governor's Way.
Okay.
Directional signs are permitted by the zoning code for any retail use. They're not subject to the typical freestanding sign standards.
And that is a four by four?
Yes, correct.
And is that also permitted to be internally illuminated?
There's no restriction on illumination for directional signs, although you have the authority to restrict it.
Do you plan on that being internally illuminated?
The one that we show is internally illuminated.
Four by four or four by one? I thought it was four square feet.
It's four square feet, yes. Not four by, it's four square feet, four foot in height. I thought that's what Mr. Flynn was referring to. It's, yeah, it's four by one, right.
Four feet in height?
Four feet in height.
Four square feet.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else on the committee have further questions for the applicant? No?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to open the meeting up to public comments. There are certainly a lot more people here this month than last month. Can I get, by a show of hands, how many people are hoping to speak? Two? I guess we'll start with anybody that would like to speak for the project.
I might suggest that we limit to two or three minutes per person.
That would be fine, and again, if someone is basically going to repeat the same thing somebody else, we'd ask that you only speak to comments that are different perspective or something unique. But if we can, I guess, since there are only three people that have asked to speak, we can keep it to about three minutes, and if someone would like to come up and start, and please give your name and address prior to speaking.
Hello, I'm Tracy Shump, 12066 Maximway in the Villas. I was not at the last meeting, so if this has already been addressed, forgive my question. I was asking about any noise. Is there going to be an outdoor speaker system that might, you know, call for customers to come in, or sales reps to report, or something like that? Would there be exterior PA-type system?
At the last meeting, we did have some discussion about certain conditions that we would put on this approval, and no loud, the applicant has indicated they don't intend to have exterior loudspeakers, and that would be a condition that is not included.
Okay. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Lear, 12086 Maximway. I have a really big concern, at least I have at this concern, and I think it's very valid. The exit and entrance that is not going to be on your main entrance is going supposedly to be on Governor's Way. Correct?
Well, there's existing entrances off of Fields Erdel, off of Governor's Way, and through the adjoining parking lots.
Okay. But you're going to have a sign on Governor's Way, right?
That's right.
That's where sign's going to be.
And as well as there's...
My concern is, living in the Villas, it's not easy to get in and out of our complex. Number one, when you're coming from the east, they come around a bend, so when you do feel like you got, can get out on there, you almost have to go out and stay in the center lane. If you don't stay in that center lane, somebody's right alongside you. You can't just go out and pull over there, because an accident will happen. There's no doubt about it. Well, this situation with you people coming out, or the new people coming out, that being basically their main entrance, if that's where their sign, their big sign's going to be, you say no?
There's going to be a directional sign there that's four feet in total size. It's, the main signs are on Fields Erdel.
Okay.
Although Governor's Way is not considered the primary thoroughfare, there are some people that will get there via Governor's Way, so we have had a conversation about permitting the applicant to put a small sign saying that this is Enterprise, which is a directional sign.
Okay. My issue is, living there for 22 years and knowing what traffic is, and it's getting worse all the time, if we pull out of our complex and there's a car coming out of Enterprise, and they want to, let's say, for example, turn left, and coming out of our complex, we would turn left, okay? They're far enough away from our entrance that if we pull out, they could pull out at the same time, which is a head-on for sure, because you have to come out fast, because cars really move fast on Governor's Way, much faster, okay? There's a problem that could be solved probably with the traffic on Governor's Way, which I'm not sure if you people have anything to do about this, but they have new signs out now, automatic speed signs, that people will see when they're driving down the road how many miles an hour you're going. And then, a 25 mile an hour sign wouldn't hurt anything. That's certainly better than big speed bumps, but that might be what you have to do to slow down traffic, because you're going to have traffic turning out of the dealership, turning left, which would be east, and people coming around a bend from the east going west, and they come pretty fast, believe me, they really do. So, you've got to get out of there fast. Well, if one of us coming out of our complex looks, and we go out to get out there kind of fast, which we have to do generally at times, that creates a problem. I think that's a really big issue.
Yeah, Andrew, if I could comment, this board does not have the purview to handle traffic impact issues. That is with the Hamilton County Engineers Office.
Okay.
So, we do not have the purview to talk about traffic management. So, I can appreciate your comments, but we can't do anything about it. That's the Hamilton County Engineers.
Well, I just wanted to bring the issue out, because it is going to be...
And they are not changing the existing access points. They're already in place, so that's not changing.
Okay. But we are going to create more traffic. This issue that we're here to debate on is creating a lot more traffic on Governor's Way at that particular area.
Well, it's currently, it was a restaurant, right? So...
It is.
There was like five restaurants, not...
There was probably a lot more traffic going to a very successful restaurant than there would be coming in and going out of a car lot. That's why we require more parking for restaurants than we do for auto sales.
The restaurants have never...
That doesn't mean that they couldn't. It's been zoned retail for 30 years, or more.
I'm not saying, I can't say about that, answer that question, because I don't really know, okay? It's a guessing game. But one thing about it, the restaurant never did a buff business where anybody ever tried to come out that I ever saw in 22 years, coming out of the restaurant, out of the backway. So, that's all I have to say, unless you'd like to ask me some more questions. I got a good reason why you've got to be careful to...
No, we understand your comments, and we appreciate them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one final speaker back there.
Might be some other people.
Steve Snyder, maybe? You remember I was here before?
I do, Steve.
I'm trying to make it short, okay? But I'll repeat what I said before. We like to be a good neighbor, and we're not here to prevent this. We're just trying to work out something that works for them and also for us. We are a residential community. Quite a talk about, there are a lot of parking spots in the back that have, very seldom, as far as I could see, for all the many years that I've been around there, have ever been used. And the more important thing is, if you drive up Governor's Way, every building is the back of a building. It's not the front of a retail establishment. You don't see anything being marketed on the back of the building. You don't see any signs on the back of the building, from Bova to the Auto Sound Place in the same Bova building, to this place was never advertised before. Coles is not advertised, and there's something between Dezen Coles, isn't there?
I don't know.
And it's not advertised on the back either. Coles was gracious enough, I don't know when they did this, but this is their buffer for the back of their building, and this covers their trucking area. And they knew that would be obtrusive to people, so... I'll pass this around to people who can see it. That's what comes with that. I can give you this.
Thank you.
So, this property is now, not only is it advertising with a directional sign, which is okay, but I have a little concern that we did talk about four-foot square when we were here, and the one that is now in tonight's drawing, which I understand they'll go back to, it's 30 feet. It's five by six. That's a huge difference. So, I don't know why that message didn't come across, but I'm glad that it's going to be taken care of.
It's six square feet.
Oh, it's six? I thought what I was looking at said...
It's six feet tall. It might be five feet wide, but the actual sign is one foot by five foot, which is...
I see. I see. I apologize. So, it's five square feet?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah. High by a five-foot wide cabinet, five square feet.
Okay. Our biggest concern is what we see as a community, and if I could give you an idea of how that is, and before I do that, I want to thank them. an idea of how that is, and before I do that, I want to thank them, two days ago I wrote to Brian and to Jana, and said, with the drawing that we had, we were looking down at the landscaping plan, on the little red and blue drawing that they submitted, and I said, we really can't tell what it's going to look like, could they give us something where we're looking directly at it? And this is what they brought tonight. And I want to thank you for doing that, we really appreciate it, it does help, to some degree. If I could give you these. If you look at the first page, which is the drawing that they're presenting tonight for landscaping, and compare it to the second page, you see the hill that's actually there? The show, what they're showing doesn't show that kind of a hill. And on the last page, this, it gives the height of some of the plants that they're planting, and I'm sure that's the beginning height, because yes, they will grow, we understand that. But we have to wait years for some of that to happen, and the ones that-
Well, Steve, let me ask you, how long has Kohl's been here?
As long as any of us can remember.
Correct, so do you think they were, those trees were the height that they are now when it started 20 something years ago?
No, but I'd be willing to bet that they were more than two feet.
Well, I mean, so if they bring in three foot or two inch caliper, is that, is that what you're asking? I mean-
Can I clarify something? The trees, pine trees when they're planted have to be six feet tall at planting, so I'm going to guess that's how tall they were, because that's the minimum requirement, it has been for years. Two and a half inch caliper tree is not a two foot tall tree, it's a two and a half inch thick tree, which is usually six to seven feet tall when you plant it.
Right.
So that's not a two foot tall tree. The bushes have to be a minimum of two feet tall at the time they're planted.
Yeah, so we're going from zero to something that they're proposing, are you suggesting that's not enough? Is that what I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're looking for.
I'm trying to work out something better than what's being proposed today in height for all of these people that are here, because immediately, all of these corners are going to be seen by everybody at the Villas.
So, so-
It's going to happen as soon as they start displaying all the cars.
I understand, so what I'm seeing is, is we got zero now.
Yes.
And they're coming in, and they're going to give you something, a plan. They're going to plant some things, right?
They also have zero cars now.
When were those-
Well, I see, I see cars there now.
All of these people brought their cars over and parked them yesterday, so I can take you a picture and give you what it was going to look like.
Okay, look, it can be cars, period. Cars are allowed to be there, right?
Sure.
Okay, so let's not say that there's not going to be any cars, or there was never cars, or whatever, because they can be.
Well, these are cars for sale, they're selling now.
I understand that, so they're coming in, they're going to add a landscaping plan. Now, mind you, you can't come in with a 10 or 15 foot tree, because it has a better likelihood of not surviving. That's why we start out, and we have a landscape design criteria that allows for a landscape plan for survivable. That's why it starts out with five and six foot trees, and they eventually become larger.
We'd be happy with five or six foot to begin with, but they're proposing two.
I don't know what the proposal is from a height perspective.
A two inch caliper tree is going to be a six or seven foot tall tree.
No, 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 in height.
The trees are required to be-
The last page that you have there-
Two and a half inch caliper at planting.
The plants that they're showing, which is the majority of the ones here-
Well, the bushes are required to be two foot tall, planting, correct?
It's one that has like the most number. Those are the ones that are going to be six foot tall. The majority of trees are going to be two foot tall. What is that drawing?
They're not trees, they're shrubs, that's where we're getting confused. The, what you're following, trees are not trees, they're shrubs, they're arborvitae shrubs.
Well, everybody has confidence in Natorp.
On this drawing that you gave us, there's a significant, probably 20, I don't know, bushes, shrubs, trees, whatever the heck they are, and they're significantly taller than these, like, three little ball bushes in front of them. I'm assuming those are the arborvitae, and they, you're saying that they're going to be six feet tall when they're put in?
No, no, sorry, those are bushes, hey, you was talking about trees, the bushes are required to be two foot tall, planting, that's right.
Here's what we're asking for. Do you see how they're drawing, which is the first page there, that's the drawing that they did?
Yes.
Do you see how it covers all the cars?
Except for one.
Yeah, you virtually can't see any of the cars, correct?
Yes.
That's really what we would like to have, and if it's possible, we would like a larger tree, shrub, whatever you want to call it, put there initially. We know, we don't expect it to cover the cars initially, we know it's going to take a few years to do that. But we would like to start with something large enough that it's going to gain ground very quickly. The other issue that you have, if you look at the two drawings, one that they're representing is kind of flat, it's showing the ground kind of flat. In reality, if you look at the picture, there's quite a bit of a hill. So if those trees are planted downhill and they're even small, they're never going to cover the back of cars, or it's going to take a lot longer.
They would be planted, they would be planted uphill, they'd be on the top of the hill, so it would be higher at ground, from your ground level perspective where you took the picture, the trees would actually appear to be taller, because they're planted on top of that hill.
I was going to say, at the, at the minimum, they're going to have to be in the middle of the bomb, halfway up the hill.
Also, I just want to make a quick side note from the two that weren't here last time, we took the city's requirements and added about 10% on top of that additionally, to try to confer with the request from the last meeting. So we did take the minimum plus add a pretty good amount of these already, to try to, you know, be a good neighbor, so.
There's about five additional shrubs over what's required.
If I could point out one of those things.
There's a significant number of extra trees, though.
See the left photo over here, that the gentleman holding up? When I took that picture, my back was to this building that we're discussing, and that obvious our units are to this. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, we're familiar with, I mean, I think at our last meeting, you know, Cynthia mentioned that she'd been over at that, so, you know, I drive by it all the time.
Unless you're looking for it, and you actually look at this and see this, you can't appreciate what we see all the time.
I think that's exactly why we had expressed our concern at the last meeting about the loudspeakers, whether there would be any, which we confirmed that there's not, and whether there would be any light that would be leaking from the property, which we now have shown that it's not. So I think, you know, and we've talked about the fact that we want that back garage door with the car wash closed during operation, again, to reduce noise. So I think this zoning commission has been exceedingly concerned about the potential impact on you and your neighbors, and, so I think, you know, that's not to say that, that, you know, everything that they've asked for is going to be provided, but I think, you know, what, you know, we're interested in your interest.
I think what we're looking for is some assurance that something will be planted there to be as big as it can be in the beginning, and then will eventually grow, so we don't see the vehicles. That's what we're looking for.
My guess is, just looking at their drawings and looking at their plantings, and George, you're probably in a, in a better position to reflect on this, is that it's going to be much better than what you see now from Kohl's, which I think are just big pine trees without, you know, any consideration for landscaping itself.
I didn't think they were that beautiful myself, I just was showing it to you, because Kohl's had done what was needed for that area.
Well, Steve, I think in general, from the last meeting, you know, you politely and matter-of-factly stated your concerns, I think we're sensitive to them, I think the applicant is trying to be accommodative. I guess the one question I would ask is, is there something that could be planted that would give initial coverage that would be a little better? I mean, I understand the life of a plant, and the fact that, you know, you can't put huge things there, and then next thing you know, in a few years, they're overgrown. I don't know, but I'm not a landscape expert.
Honestly, arborvitae's are the tall, are the, going to be the tallest, tightest screen, fastest-growing shrub that you can choose. You know, every other kind of shrub, like boxwoods, or viburnums, or, you know, those kind of, those kind of shrubs that are also typically used in streetscape buffers, are going to be much shorter at maturity, they're going to take longer to grow. I mean, what they've chosen is the kind of thing that you choose when you want to create a solid screen, which is typically not what you get in streetscape buffers, because people generally want their building to be seen, with this being the back of the building, obviously they've agreed to do this, which honestly, this is the first streetscape buffer in any retail zone that I've ever seen look like this. And this is tighter and-
So how big are these bushes going to be initially?
They're required to be a minimum of two feet in height, I don't know that I've ever seen a two foot tall arborvitae in a store, though, they're generally bigger than that. But they're required to be-
Do we define the caliper?
Not on shrubs, that's a tree requirement.
Could I address that a little bit? I got ahold of Tom Freiman, who is the head landscaper at Natorp, and he actually gave me a proposal for this site, for what we're talking about. I neglected to bring it, but I do have what he wrote here on my phone. It says, "Hi Steve, here's a detailed proposal to install modified version of a planning design you sent me, I sent from the air plane." In this quote, I substantiated, and I cannot pronounce all these plants, Pragneys Viburns for Suncast, Arborvitae, and Green Giant Arbors for White Fir. There should be a bed created for the shrubs to grow, and so that it was, so that is what I'm proposing. Essentially, I am proposing the planting be installed in our typical ways, which we feel are correct. We will use six foot tall Emerald Green Arborvitae's instead of the Pragneys Vibes, so they could start with six foot.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How many under-
Suncast Arborvitae's is what they're proposing now.
What's that?
Suncast Arborvitae's is what they're showing on their plan, just to clarify. Go ahead.
So, help me understand, the, to what you stated earlier, the landscaping along Governor's Way that they're showing, is that a zoning requirement, or they're going above and beyond what they should?
There is a zoning requirement for streetscape buffers. The thing that, that is kind of being missed or glossed over here, and I don't mean to be really long-winded in my answer to your question, but I think it's important, the zone change that approved this restaurant building, when it was a restaurant when it was first built, also included the property that includes Maximway and all the residences, it was all changed at the same time, and Governor's Way was put in across there. At that time, the plans that allowed the restaurant to be built, like I said, they don't have any restrictions on the parking in the back, there were no requirements for streetscape buffers along Governor's Way, those things didn't exist in the zoning code in the 80s when this was approved. So, right now, there's no streetscape required, and it could be anything, it could, it doesn't have to be a restaurant, somebody can move in there tomorrow and open up any kind of shop that's allowed in a retail zone. It's, the only reason that it's here is because the fact that car sales have outdoor storage of cars, and there are impacts associated with that, like loudspeakers and display, you know, graphics on the cars and stuff like that. That's the reason that it's here, is to review those things for whether they comply with the intent of the PUD, not to decide whether if retail is a good thing for this property, and not even really to go into a lot of detail about the streetscape, because the streetscape buffer isn't required currently. But zoning code does require it, and because they're adding cars in the back there, you do have the authority to require it. What they're providing is twice the number of required trees and a handful of additional bushes along that front edge, over what the zoning code does require. But currently, the final development plan for that site requires no buffer at all.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, then?
Sure.
So based on what you just said, the landscaping that is being required for this, does it have to have, I'm reading it, and it says there's X amount of trees that it has to have and stuff like that?
Right.
Can that part be overwritten, as far as what is being planted?
Like, you require it, yes, you have to be specific, but yeah, you can require something different than what the code allows, you can require it to be bigger or a different material, you have the authority to do all of that, but you have to be very specific. I mean, it has to be either a number or a type that, you know, that's, that's specific, you have to choose a shrub, if you want to change the type of shrubs.
And it's, but can we choose the spacing?
The issue with doing that, honestly, is that if you require as a condition of this approval, them to put, to plant black gum, whatever trees that they're proposing, in 10 years from now, there's a black gum disease, the condition requires them to keep planting black gum trees, because that's what you said they have to have. They can't modify it to change it without coming back through and asking you to allow them to plant a different tree, which, you know, takes time, and it defeats the purpose of having landscape plans with varying types of materials. Right now, the code just requires you to plant any tree that has a mature height of 30 feet at maturity. That's considered a cannibial tree, and you can choose which tree you want, as long as you can show that it has a 30-foot height and maturity. Same with bushes, have to have, I think it's three feet of minimum height at maturity, you can choose any bush that has that characteristic that you want. If they all die, and you have to replace them, which you will have to replace them if they die, because the zoning inspector will make you put new materials in if your bushes die, or if your trees die, you can change it to a tree that, like, if the tree that you planted is not doing well there, you can change it to something else that will do better, so you don't have to keep replacing them.
Can you not choose, choose a tree and then say, or something similar, if that tree's not available?
No, because then the fact that they required a tree doesn't mean anything, because they can choose something similar, which is the case currently, because they can choose something similar right now.
So then, the one thing that I've noticed on the plan, there's a transformer there, there's a water pit there, and I understand the residents' concerns, but I don't feel that they can be met, given some of the constraints that are there.
There's a possibility that they won't be able to create a solid screen all the way across, what you're saying, yes, that's right. The zoning code also doesn't require them to plant the materials the way that they're showing them, they can be clustered in areas, or not clustered in other areas, depending on the parameters of what's going on out in the site. So like you said, if there's a place where there's a transformer in the middle, and they can't physically put a bush in there, they're going to have to cluster them on either side of that.
We expect leniency for something like a transformer, but the majority of it is what we're talking about.
But we don't control that. There's, there's legal documents that say that the transformer is allowed to be there as utility, so zoning doesn't trump that at this stage. That's all I want, it would be clear, that's all I'm trying to be clear.
You can see it on their landscape plan, that they are accounting for that transformer, and the bushes are on either side of it.
But they're not accounting for the water pit that's next to that. I'm just saying that it's not going to be what, I would hate to set an expectation and not be able to meet it because of what's existing, that's all I'm making a statement.
Which is, which is why we typically require a number in an area, 20 per 100, so that, you know, you can figure out where you want to put them, or a landscaper can figure out where's best to plant them, so that they survive.
Well, Natorp said they could start with six foot. And then on another bush, he said five to seven feet he could install.
I'm sorry, who said five to seven?
Natorp. Natorp. I just read it to you, the, what he wrote, that he would install six foot. I want to mention one other thing, Brian mentioned how this was all approved in the 1980s. I'm sure it wasn't anticipated at that time that the back of this building would be used to market anything. And that it's going to be used to market, market vehicles.
Well, I don't think they're putting a sign on the back of the building.
No, they're not.
No, but they're still putting cars there that they want, when we were here at the last meeting, Jennifer talked about how she wanted those exposed, that it would really help to market it, she liked all the traffic that was there. And that's what we're trying to avoid, is somebody driving by looking at the used vehicles, we want them covered up. We would like them to be covered up.
You know, parking spots, parking spots.
Well, wait, wait a minute, are you, are you planning to put signs in the, on the cars that say for sale?
No, so we clarified, we have the federally required documentation, the window sticker and the sticker in the car.
Okay, but there's no sign, like in the windshield, that says, this is for sale, blah, blah, blah.
We conditioned last night, we're not going to have-
You're not going to have, you're not going to soak the sign, the windows, you're not going to have the-
So the reality of it is, we're just parking a car back there, similar, Steve, to what is currently allowed now.
I understand.
So the restaurant, they can park a car back there, a car is a car, right? So it's no different. What is different is this use is coming to the table with something better than what you have now.
Not really, because we don't have all those cars now, and now never have had. I realize that they were allowed to be, I get that.
I mean, you're asking that the business stay failing.
Yeah, you want a vacant building, and that's better, that's better than what it is.
It's a parking lot that's allowed to have cars currently.
You're talking about customers versus selling automobiles, those are two different things.
Well, actually, these cars might sit there longer than customers coming and going.
Okay, all right. Right, I'll get off of that, all of us can, and I'll let you handle this, but I'll make one more- this, but I'll make one more statement, and if you'd see if anybody else wants to say something, I'd appreciate it. If we end up with something- And along that line, if they could start out with something tall, as tall as possible, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Someone else like to speak? Okay, please come up and state your name and address prior to commencing with your comments.
This is my first meeting and bringing on this situation, and you all suggested-
Could you state your name and address, please?
What?
Your name and address.
Your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Mailin Zipfel 12036 Maxim Way.
Thank you.
You all suggested that you don't have any ability to control the traffic on Governor's Way. I wonder one thing, would it be possible for Enterprise to not put a sign out there in the back on Governor's Way? Because if they put one, and Bova puts one, it's going to be entrance for all these stores, and it will increase the traffic on Governor's Way. So that's just something I wonder whether Enterprise could limit and go ahead with your landscaping, but not put a sign out on Governor's Way that this is an entrance for Enterprise.
So, would you prefer that they drive up and down the street 10 times because they don't know where to enter Enterprise?
I prefer that they go on Field Zertle.
Well, it's directional signage saying this is where Enterprise is.
Okay. What I'm suggesting is that if they do that, maybe Bova will do that. I think we have four driveways back there that have not had signs on it before, and if we put signs in, that may increase the traffic there, and it'll certainly increase the fact that this is a, you know, the division there. So, that's just something that I thought might be helpful.
If Bova wants to come before this committee and spend the $2,000 that it takes to come here and say we want a little four-foot sign on, you guys can come back and argue that, but we're not here to talk about Bova.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Anything else from the public? You guys didn't raise your hands the first time around.
I'm Kathy Haber at 12046 Maxim Way. It actually came up from one of my neighbors. As far as the traffic going down Governor's Way and the problems that we have getting out of the community, a lot of people use that driveway by Enterprise to come and get on Governor's Way, and with the curvature of the road and everything, us coming out of our community, we even have a hard time getting out and seeing down the street with shrubs that are this high. So now we're adding tall trees, which I think is great for buffering the building, but has anybody done any kind of study on what kind of limit to visibility that'll be going on Governor's Way, and if you have, that's great. But the concern is people coming out of that driveway, if now there are trees and shrubs there, will they be able to see cars coming down, up, you know, heading west on Governor's Way? And, you know, east, I don't think is a problem, given the straightness of the road, but mostly the ones heading west. That's just a concern I have, and I just wanted to bring it up and see if anybody, you know, if you've thought of that, or if you have any idea.
The zoning resolution requires a clear sight triangle for all intersections where landscaping is allowed or signage is not allowed. You have to keep that area open so that you have enough room to look left or right when you're turning out. So, what they're showing is on the other side of the way that people will be looking left to get out of here, and so they meet the clear sight triangle requirements the way that it's shown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I have a question. Is the directional signage to enter Enterprise that's proposed from Governor's Way, is it, I mean, would someone be coming up Royal Point Drive, or is there another drive just east of that?
So, they would be coming in Royal Point Drive to get to our site. So, they would come through Bova, but sometimes they may go back to Governor's.
Okay. But the directional signage from Governor's Way would basically be having someone go up Royal Point Drive.
And that's really just to catch people to get turned around or get mass clustered there.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. I wasn't sure if there was a separate drive into your site, or, okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to close the public portion of the meeting, and the committee will have Where do we want to start?
Well, since I took notes at our last meeting, and I think I've tried to capture the flavor of this, let me see if I can kind of recapture everything that we've discussed. I think we seem to be leaning towards making a motion that would allow one sign on the north side of Field Zertle, a freestanding, the freestanding option one with landscaping if, as appropriate, restrict the use of a loudspeaker, restrict the use of promotional materials on the vehicles, keep the garage door, the garage door needs to be kept closed during operation in the back, approve the variance on the number of customer and employee parking spots, consistent with our meeting, our last meeting, approve one directional sign off of Governor's Way, and that directional sign should be four square feet with four feet in height, consistent with the standards. And then, the landscaping plan with the number of trees and shrubs as indicated, and by my poor eyesight calculation, that's six trees and 45 shrubs.
Okay. I thought I had some kind of a note about lighting, which obviously they've addressed in this round.
Right. I think the lighting we've now addressed, so the lighting plan, per the plan.
I would suggest you require a lighting plan that complies with the code be submitted, since there's one discrepancy that I think they're going to solve.
So, I have a question. Brian, do we have requirements related to the car dealerships concerning marketing material, as in no streamers, no flags?
None of those blow-off things?
Prohibited all those.
So, do we have to mention that in the resolution?
You do not, but we do not have, well, we do have restrictions on putting signs on cars and restrictions against the streamers and the, I think it's referred to as scintillating or moving signs.
Right. I thought this came up in the Chevrolet case.
Right. You can clarify by saying that there's no marketing materials on the cars, you know, if they tried to push the envelope by having their hoods up with the signs in the hoods of the cars. I mean, we consider those to be signs. Vehicle signs are prohibited. So, putting a sign on a vehicle and turning it into a sign is prohibited already, although the ones that you're referring to are already prohibited, but, I mean-
Painting windshield?
Yeah, that's a gray area.
I think we're ready to be compliant with all the other dealers in the area that do the same thing.
Yeah. I was just qualifying whether or not we had that, you know.
You can, yes, have that. You do have that authority because you're allowing a car lot where a car lot wasn't previously, so you can. But like I said, most of that's prohibited by the zoning code currently.
Okay. So, I think that would be a good condition as well.
I think you had display graphics already noted.
Right.
Again, I think I-
I said promotional materials on the vehicles, but if we want to be clear, marketing, scintillating. Well, I think you could say per the current zoning code, right?
Yes, you can. And there was one that I missed between, I think it's between loudspeakers, display graphics, parking spots.
Let's see. The one sign on Field Zertle, the freestanding option one with landscaping, restrict the loudspeaker, the promotional marketing, keeping the garage door closed.
Garage door closed, that's it.
Approve the variance on the number of customer and employee parking spots, approve one directional sign off of Governor's Way that is four square feet, four feet in height, consistent with the standards, landscaping plan with the number of trees and shrubs is indicated on their drawing, and a lighting plan that complies with the plan that's submitted and with the zoning code.
I have a, I'm sorry, I do have another question. Pardon me.
Please.
So, I just want to be clear here. Do you have a reciprocal cross-access easement agreement that you're aware of with the adjoining property owner?
Yeah, I believe that has an easement on the survey.
Okay.
That we can share that track.
Well, does the adjoining property owner understand where the property line is, and that even though you have a reciprocal easement and parking agreement, that you plan to utilize those spots that are adjacent to the furniture store?
So, if you're talking about, I thought you were talking about the access of that year. If you're talking about those-
I'm talking about the ones up front that run perpendicular to your store, yeah.
Yeah, so those spaces are exclusive. Are you talking about the drive behind it? The drive behind the parking space?
No, I'm just saying, if you look, if you look at an area, it's currently occupied by a lot of cars, and it's probably their employees. I just-
Yeah, I mean, we have had communication with Bova. We would certainly do that again before we acquire, but yeah, that is our dedicated-
That's where you plan to put your inventory, isn't it?
Our inventory when we have enough to put it there.
The reason why I bring it up is because you have applied for us, you have outlined shaded areas of where you want to put specific cars, right? Employees, customers, et cetera, et cetera. And if for some reason you're not getting access to those spots, then what happens is now you're, now you're then putting different cars in different areas that are uncompliant with what you've just submitted to us.
Understood. Yeah, we will, we will, I appreciate you bringing that up. We will make sure that the adjacent property owners are aware that we will be taking that too. I want to know if it's, that I'm going to be the marketing manager for the current owners. I don't know who to use.
Okay.
But we'll make sure we do.
I just, because it's tied together, basically. You understand what I'm saying?
I do. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Bova's west of First Park.
Okay. On the other side of Royal Point.
See, I'm talking about the, here, you see this? Those, those. Okay. And if for some reason they can't utilize those, then what happens is this whole concept kind of gets thrown out the window.
Sure. Problem. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Are we ready to propose a motion?
I think so. If you're considering those conditions, I have a couple of questions. First of all, landscaping around the base of the sign needs to be specified in some way.
Can't be at staff's discretion.
No, I'm not allowed to have that authority. No, you have that authority, not me.
Oh, darn.
And there's not a streetscape buffer required there because it's so narrow. You could say three, a minimum of three shrubs on either side of the sign?
Yeah, a minimum of three shrubs, the size of which can be determined by the applicant.
And that's on each side of the sign?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the parking spot variance. So, what they've shown on the graphic that's been submitted is 25 employee and customer parking spaces, which is what we require parking for, customers and employees. So, the variance that would be needed for that would be to allow the 25 where, what, 120 are required, or 78? Find that number, but that's what we're talking about, granting the variance to allow the 25 that they're showing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you said the 78 out of, versus the 120?
Yes, I think it's 58. Is it, we said, total of 42 parking spaces is required. So, it's 26, or, I'm sorry, 25.
How do you get 25? I think you read the nine upside down.
Oh, is that six? I'm sorry. So, that's 10, and 22.
There you go. Did you see if you keep it?
Yes. Well, I read the two 26's on the right way. I said 42?
22.
Where 42 are required.
Yeah, 42.
Yeah. Okay. Otherwise, I think I have it.
Okay. So, can I make a motion in regard to Sims 6-87, Zavakos Shopping Center? How do you say that?
Zavakos?
Zavakos Shopping Center. Do I have to read this all again, or can I say as previously stated?
So, I'll read it just to make sure I got it all.
All right.
Works. First of all, you're allowing sign option number one as submitted with a minimum of three shrubs planted on the, at the base of each side of the sign. Loudspeaker use on the property would be prohibited. Display graphics prohibited. Display graphics shall be prohibited per the zoning resolution. So, display graphics prohibited per zoning resolution. Parking spaces, variance granted to allow 22 parking spaces where 42 are required. A condition is the garage door be closed when in use. A condition requiring a directional sign, or allowing a directional sign on Governor's Way that meets the code requirements for directional signs. A landscaping plan, that landscaping be, I'm sorry, that landscaping be installed per the plan submitted, and that a lighting plan be submitted to meet the code requirements.
You got it. No, I think the, that's it?
Is everybody second?
I'll say.
Is everybody comfortable with the conditions?
Great, they're comfortable.
So, you've motioned and seconded?
I motioned, he seconded.
Okay. Ms. Buco?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reickman?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we have any old business, Jana?
No.
Do we have any new business?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
Go ahead.
I'll allow, I'll defer to Jeff to discuss two items. One is retirement, I think, and something else.
That, well, that was mine, so I don't know if I had something else. So, we understand, Jana, this is going to be your last meeting.
Yes.
And first, I wanted to personally, and I think all of us want to thank you for keeping us in line, keeping us in order, and doing everything you do for us as a zoning commission, but also all of us as township residents. And just want you to know how much we appreciate everything that you've done for all of us here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And happy birthday, too.
And as a little token of our appreciation, we have a little gift that we'd like to give And I didn't open it. I think everyone's going to want to see this.
Okay.
These are fancy boxes and everything.
I'd want to.
And this is a little Bud vase, and it says on it, "Jana Graham, Happy Retirement, Sims Township Zoning Commission 2021."
Thank you.
Nice.
Have you already sold it?
No.
It's cool. And we will give the same when Brian retires.
So, you guys won't know until too late.
This is for George.
Oh.
Did somebody say there's a second item of new business?
No.
No?
Can I ask a question, though, to Brian? Silver Spring House, we approved their, has anything happened with that?
Yeah. They're trying, my understanding, they're trying to get financing for the expansion. They still have the tent up. They're in violation of zoning with the tent. They're in a position where we are going to cite them for being in violation with the tent. It's my understanding that they plan to take that down in the next couple of months and build the addition.
Is there a daily panel be?
There can be. We typically- We typically don't start that route, because it has to go through Housing Court, and people generally don't pay their fine. They take the opportunity to go to Housing Court and drag it out. If that's the case, every time that we cite them again, they, they wait, they continue the hearings to lump them all into one hearing. So we actually delay the process by citing them a bunch of times. And if they do anything, you know, six months later to solve the problem, it gets dismissed, then none of the fines go through anyway. So we typically write one fine, let the court hearing happen. If they show up at court and it gets dismissed, then we don't write another one, because the court dismissed it. If it gets upheld then, and they don't change what they were doing, then we write another citation. If they pay it out, we write another citation, and if we, they keep paying us citations, we keep fining them, and eventually, we do get to the point where we're fining them every day, get to that point.
I understand they bought the tent.
Bought it, yeah, I'm sure. It's been there for a while.
Because one of their concerns was how much they were paying to rent it, but my understanding is they subsequently bought it.
They're attempting to find a buyer for the tents.
They're attempting-
Buyer for the tent?
Yes, they want it, pay a phenomenal amount for it, make it get a lot less for it, they're trying to sell.
Thank you. Anything else as far as new business? No?
I don't think you have a meeting next month.
Okay. Any administrative matters?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion for adjournment, then?
All motion.
Mr. Reikman?
Yes.
Ms. Buca?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
We have trouble.
Thank you so much. I'm very nice.